Twenty twenty two. Let me start that again. Will the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, April sixth, twenty twenty two, please come to order? This evening's meeting will be a virtual planning and zoning meeting hosted by Zoom. During this meeting, our procedures will be as follows. One, when you enter the meeting, you will be in the virtual waiting room until the meeting host admits you. Two, please be aware that your camera, if you have one, and your microphone will be muted by the meeting host when you enter the meeting. You can turn on your camera at any time so you can be seen by others if you choose to. In order to run an efficient and orderly meeting in this virtual environment, unless stated otherwise by the meeting chairman during the meeting, the meeting host will keep everyone other than the commission members muted. You will still be able to hear everything said by commission members, even if you are not muted and or your camera is not on. There will be the opportunity for public comment during public hearings, at which time public participants will be unmuted. Three, the secretary will read the call of the meeting as published according to Governor Lamont's executive order. For during the public hearing, the applicant will be invited to present the application, explaining to the commission and others what is being requested. The meeting host will share all related documents on screen as needed. In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda are available through the public meeting calendar page of the town website, www.cigilford.co.us and also through a direct link on the planning and zoning page. Five comments of town agencies will be read for each application. If there are any, there will be clarifying questions from commissioners. Six, then there will be the opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Please raise your hand to the Zoom platform and wait to be called on and unmuted. First, those who wish to support the application can come forward. Second, those who oppose the application can come forward. As this is a public hearing, it must be recorded. It is necessary for speakers to identify themselves each time they speak by stating their name and address. The applicant will then have the opportunity to address questions or concerns raised by the public or commissioners. Eight, once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearing and regular meeting during which the commission will try and reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as the decision of this commission and has the right to appeal to Superior Court if desired. Nine decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the Planning and Zoning Department at two zero three four five three eight zero three nine or by emailing planning.zoning@ci.gilford.co.us after nine AM. Ten, all actions taken by the commission will be on a roll call vote. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves for record before speaking. See this evening are the following, and I would ask you to raise your hand and say hello. Sean Cosgrove. Frank DeAndrea.
Hello.
Phil Freeman.
Hello.
Alan Brown.
Hi.
Scott Edmund. Kevin Clark.
Hello.
I'm Phil Johnson and Jason Marchy is our alternate this evening. Seated this evening are not George Kroll. I have to update this. It's Jamie Stein, the town planner. We also have Lisa Piambino, Planning and Zoning Administrative Assistant. And our acting zoning enforcement officer is Stephen Natick. They get the pronunciation correct, Stephen?
Close enough.
You correct me at some point in the future. This meeting will be recorded via the Zoom platform and made available on the town website. The secretary will now read the legal notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Gilbert Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on April sixth, twenty twenty two. This meeting will be conducted through a web and phone meeting only. Attendees are advised not go to the regular community center location because a physical meeting will not take place. See below sign in information for the Zoom meeting. The following applications will be heard. James and Joyce Glass to Guilford Point, map twenty seven lot seven zone R three coastal site plan review to tear down the rebuild house within a hundred feet of a coastal resource. Copies of these applications are available for inspection in the planning and zoning office and on the town's website, At this hearing, persons may attend by either phone or web connection and shall be heard. All written correspondence shall be submitted to planning.zoning@ci.gilford.co.us. Documents are available at the planning and zoning office dial two zero three four five three eight zero three nine for assistance. Dated Guilford, Connecticut, this fifteenth day of March, twenty twenty two, Phil Johnson, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Would someone like to make a motion to open?
So moved.
Thank you. Sean Cosgrove.
Hi.
Frank DeAndrea.
Hi.
Phil Freeman.
Hi.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Ted Edmund.
Yes.
Kevin Clark.
Yes.
Thank you, sorry. I'll open first item on our agenda. James and Joyce Glass to Guilford Point, map twenty seven lot seven zone R three coastal site plan review to tear down and rebuild house within a hundred feet of the coastal resource. If I'm not mistaken, I think Michael Harkin is here to present that.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Michael Harkin. I'm a professional engineer and principal of Harkin Engineering located at seventy eight Wolf Hollow Lane in the town of Killingworth, Connecticut. Again, here tonight on behalf of my clients, Jim and Joyce Glass for their property at two Guilford Point Drive to Guilford Point Lane, excuse me, located near town of Guilford, Connecticut. It's also known as map twenty four lot seven. Again, it's in the R three zone and it comprises a zero point five nine acres. I know you've seen this property quite a few times in the past. The first time was first a CAM application for a swimming pool and spa. The second time you saw it was for a garage addition with a CAM application. And we're here tonight actually for a tear down kind of rebuild of the house almost ninety percent in the existing footprint. We're just bumping out a little bit. So Jamie, if you can allow me to share my screen or you can put my drawing up if you like, either or.
Got it, Mike. You can share.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me go find my files here. Bear with me, guys.
Mike, I assume that just they bumped into some issues with the old house.
Yes, sir. When they were opening up the the walls and stuff from the original addition. You know, it kind of got into a situation where they they think the house was too far gone, so they wanted to basically tear it down and virtually rebuild it in the same footprint. They will be not a hundred percent tearing down the house. There will be some, you know, some walls left there. And basically a small addition, and I can go through that. Can everybody see my drawing on the screen? Okay, so again, just to familiarize ourselves with the project site. If you come down Seaside Avenue, at the end of Seaside Avenue is Jacob's Beach. Okay, so if you take a left in the Jacob's Beach, this is the next house. This is to Guilford Point that you can see from Jacob's Beach. So this whole area is Jacob's Beach and then it abuts Long Island Sound, which you can see here. This is an existing seawall. So the existing house is virtually within the same exact footprint that you see here. The only difference is we're doing a little bump out where my cursor is. And again, it's one hundred percent code complying. We did have a ZBA approval previously for this little area in here for the garage, which is not really changing. This is something that if you would like, you can speak to Jamie on this a little more. We were actually looking at doing this because it was a simple modification to the plan. We were actually thinking of just using it as a modification. But then we decided, you know what, with with this small addition and the possible fill in the back area that we should bring it forth into the commission and let DEP have another look at it, which they did. I haven't seen any letter from DEP. Usually they don't put them out when they're just minor, minor projects. And, you know, it's the same reviewer and she's seen this property. This will be the third time now. So the previous two applications, obviously, we've got letters of approval and support from them. And I don't see, you know, without having one, I think that that's falls within default that within the same parameters of the previous two DEP letters. It's important to note that, again, we submitted the B one hundred for the Health Department, which we do have an approval for this. It should be in the file. It probably read into record afterwards. I did have some discussions with Steve today regarding some issues with the, not so much issues, but some additional information for the building permit that will submit at the time for the building permit regarding some calculations. But other than that, it's a pretty straightforward application. Again, we meet all the requirements of the planning and zoning regulations. You know, the bulk standards that we have in our drawing, we meet all the Health Department requirements for the B one hundred, which you can see on the right side where my cursor is. And I think that's it. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have at this time.
Any questions from commissioners? We do have a memo from Kevin McGee, which should be read into the record. Scott, do you want to grab that one?
Yes. Dated April first, twenty twenty two, to the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission from Kevin McGee, environmental planner, RE, RE subdivision and site plan. Nope, that's wrong. Apologies. Bear with me.
I can probably jump, but I've got the one in April twenty two if you want.
I got there.
Okay.
Great. Same date, same two, same from RE Coastal Area Management Review for James and Joyce Glass to Guilford Point Road, Guilford, Connecticut, oh six four three seven. This is from map twenty seven lot seven. The applicant is proposing to tear down and rebuild the existing house primarily in the existing footprint. The property is located in a FEMA zone VE elevation fourteen and FEMA zone AE elevation twelve. The coastal resource policy police is applicable for the property are coastal hazard area, coastal waters, shorelands, rocky shorefront, tidal wetlands and beaches. The site plan provides for erosion and sedimentation control measures that are designed to protect the adjacent coastal resources. The work being conducted could have an impact on the adjacent coastal resources if erosion and sedimentation control measures are not properly installed and maintained. In order to make sure that the coastal resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. One, that town Guilford zoning enforcement officer should be notified to inspect the sedimentation erosion control measures prior to site construction. Soil stockpiles should be contained by silt fencing and or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to satisfaction of the zoning enforcement. Two, the site should be inspected daily to make sure that all construction debris has been properly disposed of in a covered dumpster. And memo.
Be good with those, Michael.
Yes, sir. We we looked at that memo. We have no problem with those conditions.
Terrific. To the best of my knowledge, that's the only staff memo on this one, Jamie.
Mr. Chairman, there should have been a Health Department.
Yeah, there's one from health, and I can actually share it on the screen if you'd like.
Sure. Sean, you want to grab that one?
When I see it, I will. So it's from Sonya, we're going to plan to plan zoning April sixth, twenty twenty two, regarding two Guilford Point Road map twenty seven lot seven. The B one hundred A application for the above request property is approved. The code complying area is demonstrated on P plan by Harkin Engineering LLC. July twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, last revised on March fifth, twenty twenty two. The approval is continued on the following. The bonus room cannot access from the interior of the second floor. No plumbing allowed in the finished space. The application meets the requirements for nineteen dash thirteen dash B one hundred A. The proposed application does not reduce the potential repair area for an onsite subsurface sewage disposal system in a code complying area exists on the property.
Michael, could you help me understand the the bonus room comment?
Yes, sir. When you access from the second floor, the the garage space over the garage, it has a second floor. By adding that doorway into that, that can constitute an extra bedroom. So what Sonya is basically saying is you from the second floor, you cannot access that space above the bonus room to create an extra bedroom. Hence, she doesn't want any plumbing in there, which that would create an extra bedroom as well. So my client is good with that. He's really using the the upper part of the garage as as storage, so he has no issues with that.
I assume that the reasoning for that, not wanting the extra bedroom, has to do with capacity on the septic?
Yes, sir. If we add the extra bedroom, we have to increase the size of the septic, the size of the tank, and basically put a new septic system in. We're trying to keep the same size of the house for bedrooms and not increase that capacity.
Thank you for the clarification. Are there any other questions from commissioners with respect to this coastal area site plan review? Well, okay, I will kick it out. Are there any questions from the public? With respect, I would ask that we do questions first. Any questions from the public with respect to this application? Again, if your camera is off, I can't see you. And if you're muted, I can't hear you. So I'll assume that you don't have a problem with it. Unless we have otherwise. Are there any comments either in favor or against this application? With no comments either in favor or against, would someone like to make a motion to close?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, can I just say one thing?
Sorry.
Yes. Record, I didn't state, and we need to state that the sign was posted for the project. The public hearing sign, we did take a picture and we did submit it to the file, so that's documented. As well as we did send letters out to the abutting neighbors, which the list was provided by the town. So we did do that, and we did submit the the mailings as well as part of the record, just to make sure it's a complete application.
Thank you for your diligence. Very much appreciated. Without comments or questions from the public or commissioners, would someone like to make a motion to close?
So moved.
Moved. Thank you. Sean Cosgrove.
Yes.
Thank you. Frank DeAndrea.
Yes, sir.
Phil Freeman.
Yes.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Kevin Clark.
Yes.
And I will also vote to close. We will act on this this evening. You're welcome to stay. Or just call Lisa tomorrow morning. I have a feeling we might be here for a little bit while, a little while on our next one. But thank you very much for your presentation, Michael. As always, very professional.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night. We'll see you soon.
Okay, next item on our agenda is Hubbard Road LLC, Hubbard Road, map seventy nine lot forty eight zone I to re-sub, re-subdivision two lots. Is there someone here to present on behalf of Hubbard Road LLC?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioner. Attorney Amy Bloom from the law firm of Burstein, Volpe and McKeon, nine hundred Chapel Street, eleventh floor, New Haven, Connecticut. The applicant, Connecticut Affordable Housing Initiative, is proposing the development of an affordable housing project pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes eight dash thirty G. The proposal is for the construction of one hundred one-bedroom units located in two buildings, excuse me, fifty units per building. Building number one shall contain elderly units as defined in eight dash thirty G as being age restricted. And building two shall contain family units as defined in Connecticut General Statutes eight dash thirty G as no age restriction. Thirty percent of the dwelling units will be designated as affordable units. Fifteen dwelling units shall be rented to persons and families whose income, annual income is less than or equal to eighty percent of the median income. And fifteen dwelling units shall be rented to persons and families whose annual income is less than or equal to sixty percent of the median income as required by Connecticut General Statutes eight dash thirty J. As a commission, your familiarity with the Guilford Plan of Conservation and Development, which was adopted on July fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, is very valuable. An important goal stated in Guilford's Plan of Conservation and Development is to encourage the development of a diverse housing supply for households with a broad range of incomes, family size and ages. Several strategies set forth in the plan to accomplish this goal include modifying zoning and policies to encourage diversity and variety of housing. Provide and support the development of public infrastructure to support higher density development. Working with affordable housing developers to develop housing consistent with the goals of this plan. Working with the Guilford Housing Authority to develop new projects, research and plan for future housing needs. Housing is the cornerstone of opportunity in Connecticut and across the country. The history of placement of affordable housing is embedded into the fabric of communities. In many instances, this continues to be perpetuated by local land use and zoning regulations. Guilford is in need of affordable housing. According to the twenty twenty Affordable Housing Appeals List published by the State of Connecticut, based on the twenty ten census, Guilford has nine thousand five hundred and ninety six housing units. As of twenty twenty, one hundred and eighty six housing units have government assistance. Ten have rental assistance. Thirty four have single-family CHFA USDA mortgages and zero are deed restricted units for a mere total of two hundred and thirty assisted units, which translates to two point four percent of all housing units to be affordable. The Guilford Affordable Housing Plan Existing Conditions Report that was recently prepared by RKG Associates, Inc. provides additional data points ranging from population and housing characteristics to general economic indicators and labor force standards. It highlights and quantifies the issues opportunities present within the community as it relates to Guilford's existing housing market. Guilford saw a percentage increase in residents over the age of sixty five as well as a decrease in residents under eighteen and those between forty five and fifty four. There is a need for a more diverse portfolio of housing options, particularly for younger people, as well as options that provide support and access for elderly residents and retirees living on fixed income. Based on the American Community Survey, which is basically the census survey, it is estimated that changes in housing units over the past decade increase in larger multifamily buildings, twenty or more units per building could be linked to the town's goals to support seniors and younger working age residents. That is what this project proposes. One building to be dedicated to our seniors and another for our younger working age residents. The HUD considers a household to be cost burdened if they are spending more than thirty percent of their monthly income on housing costs. In Guilford, about fifty two percent of renter households are cost burdened, which reflects a rate very similar to New Haven County. The challenge for households spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing costs is that it leaves significantly less money for spending on other necessities such as food, transportation, education, healthcare and childcare. Finding ways to build more housing that is affordable to renters is one way of helping to keep cost burdening down. Renters in Guilford face an expensive housing market and continue to shoulder high housing cost burdens. Across all income brackets, Guilford has households facing housing cost burdens. Furthermore, Guilford has a very limited rental stock in median rents higher than most communities in the South Central Regional Council of Governments region. As rents continue to rise across the region, existing residents may face challenges meeting the rising costs of being able to rent in town. Based on the existing conditions in Guilford, housing is becoming more expensive. Evidence of this trend is supported by the demographic changes, rising home prices and rents, as well as increases in assessed values, all of which can be linked to increased rates of cost burdening. These trends suggest distributional gaps between incomes, home values and available housing, indicating that there is a mismatch between current housing options and the existing population creating gaps in affordability. The study indicated that there was not enough supply of rental housing across all types, particularly senior age restricted and affordable workforce types. It further indicated that there was a strong demand for all rental housing types. In terms of public sentiment of rental impacts in Guilford, the majority of residents indicated that rental housing would have a positive impact on commercial businesses, public services and rental prices within the community. In accordance with Connecticut General Statutes eight dash thirty J, honor before June first of this year, every municipality will be required to adopt an affordable housing plan specifying how the municipality intends to increase the number of affordable housing developments in the municipality. The proposal before the commission tonight to develop the property for an affordable housing project is a perfect start for Guilford's plan. In fact, the proposal in front of you is for one hundred units. Of the one hundred units, thirty will be age restricted. In accordance with Connecticut General Statutes eight dash thirty G subsection L four, there are, excuse me, the designated housing unit equivalent points. Under that section, in accord that a project that yields fifty points would qualify for a certificate of affordable housing project completion with the state. This project before the board, a hundred units total, comes out to fifty one point five housing unit equivalent points, which would qualify Guilford to obtain that certificate from the state. The applicant has assembled a team of highly regarded qualified experts to address all aspects of the development before this commission. And I'd like to introduce our team. From LRC Group, we have John Wagenblatt LS. Mr. Wagenblatt has over forty years of varied surveying experience. Rodney Morrison is also with LRC with over thirty five years of experience. Mr. Morrison is equipped with a wide range of valuable technical engineering skills. Henry Thomas leads the firm's landscape architectural services with over forty years of experience in land planning and site design of a wide range of project types and environments. Mr. Rich Reynolds has over twenty nine years' experience as a design engineer of residential and commercial development. We also have Martin Brogie, a soil scientist. Martin has been thirty years of experience as a soil scientist working in Connecticut, Massachusetts and Rhode Island, performing wetland delineation, which he did on this project, which has been one of the things accepted by the inland wetlands commission. We also have Mr. George Logan, who is the co-owner and principal environmental scientist and senior ecologist for REMA, specializing in title and inland wetland delineations and evaluation, permitting, wetland mitigation design, implementation and monitoring and the preparation of environmental compliance documents in accordance with national, state and local criteria. We also have Mr. Rob Sonnixon, who has more than forty five years of experience in civil engineering, land use planning, water resources management and environmental science and engineering. Last but not least, we have John Pruitt, who has over fifty years of experience as an architect, a member of the American Institute of Architects, AIA Connecticut Chapter, holder of an NCARB certificate. Their full resumes have been provided to Jamie and are to be made part of this file. I would like to turn the screen now over to our architect, John Pruitt, to start the presentation with the building design.
Thank you very much, Amy. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, for the record, I'm John Pruitt, the owner and principal of John Pruitt Jr., AIA Architect. I am the architect of record for Memorial Estates. My address is one sixty one Peddlers Road, Post Office, box four thirty five in Guilford, Connecticut. I've been in practice in Guilford since nineteen eighty four and have been responsible as the architect of record for numerous multifamily projects dating. and have been responsible as the architect of record for numerous multifamily projects dating back to nineteen eighty-four. If I may share my screen, I do have a presentation. So let me see if I can, in fact. Okay. All right. Okay, I see. Okay. The proposed project consists of two identical buildings, each with four stories, each with nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-five square feet of area. The project contains one hundred one-bedroom dwelling units, fifty dwelling units per building. The buildings will be constructed out of building code-approved materials. It is principally a wood-framed building and would feature exterior walls with a one-hour fire rating. Each building will be insulated according to the requirements of the Connecticut Energy Code. Exterior materials will be designed and constructed to resist wind and seismic forces per the State of Connecticut Building Code. Each unit will be heated and cooled with individual heating unit. The entire building will be protected with an automatic fire protection sprinkler system. Each unit will also feature a fully-applienced kitchen, as well as individual washer-dryer combos. Each building features a main entry with a canopy. There is an elevator which services the, is an elevator which services all four floors. The dwelling units range in size from five hundred and eighty-five square feet to six hundred and twenty-four square feet. Each building and each dwelling unit is fully accessible to and usable by disabled persons in compliance with ANSI A one seventeen point one. Within the project, there exist both accessible type A units, which may be occupied by residents with advanced disabilities, and accessible type B units, which are less restrictive, but can be occupied by seniors and those with less restrictive disabilities. The project, which is located on Hubbard Road, is in an area which features mainly commercial and industrial uses. Nonetheless, the overall intent of the exterior design of this project is to give the building a residential appearance with material profiles which are indigenous throughout Guilford. Use of gables and the pitched roof design further helps to define the residential nature of the overall building design. The materials which I propose in the design include the following, as indicated on these elevations. Vinyl siding in a random-cut, straight-edged shingle profile, seven-inch exposure for building siding. Vinyl siding and a clapboard profile, six-inch exposure for a portion of the building siding. There's also vinyl siding and a vertical barnboard profile with an eight-inch exposure. Will utilize vinyl-framed windows, which are in compliance with the Energy Star requirements. They will have a U factor of zero point two eight. And they'll be very energy-efficient. The front entrance doors will be aluminum frame at the front entrance and above the front entrance in this area, the central area. We are using an ashlar stone veneer, which is a thin stone siding, which you can get from either a thin stone or stone facade or similar. The project will use cornerboards, which are rectangular profile and which are PVC material like Isaac. A horizontal profile trim, which is a colonial-type trim, also available in Isaac and PVC. The roofing that we propose to use, typical that you would find on residences, but in this sense is a high-wind-rated composite asphalt fiberglass shingle. We also indicate some wood panels in the facade. These feature border trim with a colonial profile. That's these panels. And these are the same material as the Isaac trim. The choice of materials considers durability and low maintenance, which we feel is appropriate and necessary for this type of project. This building was presented to the Town of Guilford Design Review Committee. I represent to you tonight that I have considered and incorporated their comments and recommendations in my design presented to you tonight. At that, this concludes my presentation. I thank the commission very much for the opportunity to present this project to you. I trust that through my design efforts here and those of my engineering team, we have presented to you tonight a project that would be a significant and positive contribution to Guilford's initiatives to provide affordable housing available to all. At that, before close, I will be available to respond to any questions from the commissioner from the public. Thank you very much.
I don't know if you want to ask questions of Mr. Pruitt right now or you want to wait till we're done with all of our presentation?
Jamie, can you hear me? Sorry.
I can, Phil.
Yeah. I'm coming, sorry, a little computer issue there. Can I just ask? Maybe it's a silly question, but is there a reason? What is the logic behind having a hundred one-bedroom units versus some mix of one and two-bedroom units?
So the hundred one-bedroom units is based on that, speaking with parties, I actually spoke with Terry Revizza from the Guilford Housing Authority. There's a great need for elderly housing. She has people, as she said, beating down her door for housing. The one-bedroom units are work. They are the most financially feasible way to present this project. The terms of an affordability plan and managing affordable units, there are strict qualifications and guidelines, which are all set forth in the affordability plan, which is part of the application before the commission. And for qualifying individuals, it's very difficult when you have a mix of unit uses. Based on the demographics and based on the data that we've seen, there is a high demand for one-bedroom units for the elderly, as well as for young starting out working. And we believe that this to be the most practical, financially feasible, and most needed in this town.
I guess I was thinking about it just from the standpoint of if you had a single parent. You know, having a one-bedroom place is a little more challenging if you have a single parent with a child. But I guess my sense is that's not the target demographic that you're going after?
That's correct. That's not the target demographic, as well as a four-story apartment-style building, such as these are, is not really conducive to family units. It's more conducive to the one-bedroom aspect.
Okay, I guess, unless there are any other quick questions from permission? Yes, Jason?
Yeah, just a couple of questions for the architect, for John. I couldn't quite read it. Is the height from the ground to the peak, it looked like forty-eight feet, eight inches?
That's pretty accurate. What you read on the elevation drawing is what it is.
Okay, and then, since the demographic, what seems to be, would be for elderly, is there a requirement for an elevator for a building of this height?
These buildings both are equipped with elevators.
They are, okay, I missed that part. And then, and then.
Yeah, if I may add to that, the elevator is actually a twenty-five-pound unit. And it is equipped according to ANSI A one seventeen point one with audiovisual controls, you know, braille legibility, all of those things.
Okay, and then was there a requirement from the fire department at all about a fire-rated stairwell interior versus exterior?
Yes, for a two-story, for a four-story building of this sort, the stairwells will have to have a, be enclosed in a two-hour fire-rated enclosure. So all of that is going to be shown on the working documents, which we hope to file to the building department should this application be approved.
Okay, great, thank you. That's it, Phil.
Thank you. Kevin?
Why not more affordable units?
Why not more affordable units?
Why not a greater percentage of units being deemed affordable?
That's not financially feasible to do more financial, more affordable units. We're going under the statute and providing what's exactly required by the statute, which is thirty percent.
There wouldn't be any grants or anything like that available if a developer wanted to deem more of the units affordable? To make up for the potential financial loss?
I don't know of any grants available to put in more affordable units than they're putting in. They're going under the statute, which requires thirty percent. And that's, excuse me, the statute in which this project is being proposed under.
Okay. Thank you. And I know you had mentioned the figure as to what is defined as affordable. Can you just, other than just saying eighty percent of the area median income, I believe is what you said, but I could be wrong. Can you just, for our clarification, tell us what that is?
So, yes, so if you look at, bear with me, I just.
All right, let me rephrase, what that number is? I think you all understand what it is. It's just we don't know what.
No, I understand. So I'm just gonna, if you look at the affordability plan that was filed.
Amy, it's Jamie. I'm happy to pull that up for you, so.
Because I was going to refer you to the page of the plan. Thanks, Jamie.
Sure. I think it's on.
Page seven?
Okay, thank you. There we go.
Okay, so the twenty-twenty-one median family income for the state of Connecticut is a hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and twenty-six. That same median income for the New Haven Metro. Guilford falls under the New Haven/Meredon Metro area pursuant to the HUD guidelines, which is ninety-three thousand. Based on the Connecticut General Statutes and the regulations, there's a formula that has to be applied. So what happens here under the formula is you take the lower of the New Haven Metro Meredith area or statewide. So we have to start off with the ninety-three thousand as our starting point. Then you determine the adjusted income. The way that the guidelines and the regulations are for a one-bedroom, it's considered one point five persons. So the, you multiply the ninety-three thousand by seventy-five percent. And then you calculate eighty percent of the next item too, and it goes through the formula of where you finally come down to line number eight. So at eighty percent of the median income, the maximum monthly housing payment would be thirteen hundred and ninety-five dollars. Now, tenant-paid costs, including electricity, we get a rough idea of how much that would be. That gets deducted from the thirteen ninety-five, and then to be determined would be what the maximum monthly rent is that the tenant at eighty percent could pay. So hypothetically, if utilities were a hundred, the maximum monthly rent would be twelve ninety-five for a person that was at eighty percent of the median income. The next page, on page eight, is the same calculations, however, it's based on sixty percent of the median income. So as you can see, that rent comes down to one thousand dollars a month, a little over one thousand. Hypothetically, if your utilities were a hundred, you're at nine hundred and forty-six dollars for a one-bedroom. So that would be fifteen units at nine forty-six and fifteen units at the twelve ninety-five.
Thank you. That's very, just for my benefit, what's the market rate? Any idea what they're going to be charging?
I do, I do not know, because the way things have been going with the housing market, the market rate's been, has changed so much since October till now. So it would really depend on when it was, you know, completed, what the market would be. But you're probably in the neighborhood of like two thousand, I would think, for brand new.
Just curious. Thank you. Do you want to continue with the presentation or we have a pretty good pile of memos from town staff as well?
Well, we could continue, or whichever works best for you.
I could get back to you. However you want to proceed is fine with us.
Okay, so I have the engineers here. Rich should be on the line and/or John Wagenblatt to go over just the way that the site plan lays out with the stormwater management and the access for the fire department as well.
Terrific. Hello, good evening. My name is John Wagenblatt. I'm a principal of the LRC Group. Our address is one sixty West Street, Suite E, Cromwell, Connecticut. And I'm here to give you a rundown on the site. Is it a possibility I can share the screen, please? Thank you. You see, a aerial image? Oh, thank you. All right, the project, project site is located on the south side of Hubbard Road. It's approximately midway between Long Hill Road to the west and Church Street, Durham Route seventy-seven on the east. And it's also just north of the exit fifty-eight off of I ninety-five. The site is a four-acre portion of a former larger track that was developed, which a portion was developed a few years ago to the west. It's across the street from the town of Guilford School Bus Parking Lot. And it's bordered on the east by the West River and on the south by MAC Management, which has a a industrial or industrial complex. The site is, excuse me.
I was just saying, material storage, I think, is probably a pretty good way of putting it.
Probably good. And the site is currently zoned, it's an industrial two-zone, and it actually does lie outside the aquifer protection zone as well. The elevation of the site varies from around thirty-two to thirty-five along the street. Seventeen, elevation seventeen down on the east side, down by the river. And it slopes up and it slopes to the floodplain area of around elevation twenty, and the rest of the site is around. To the floodplain area of around elevation twenty and the rest of the site is around forty two. The site is generally flat from just inside the tree line to the west. And then it slopes down, actually I can show you right here, and it does slope down to an inland wetland area. Um, we do have the, which was marked by, as Amy mentioned earlier, by Martin Brogie. Uh, and there is a, a A E floodline through the property, which I'm tracing now. And we also added at the request. The five hundred year flood. The proposed site plan. I'm hoping you see a colored site plan now. The, as was mentioned earlier, we are proposing two buildings with a total of a hundred part apartments. The John W Clark Building. Which, um, is cited, um, just to the south of Hubbard Road and runs parallel to Hubbard Road in the east west fashion. Um, and the second building, uh, the Francis J Fitzgerald Building, which runs north, south and, um, in the midpoint of the site. And runs perpendicular. To Hubbard Road. Uh, as you are aware, this site is still currently going through inland wetlands and this has, um, gone through several. Edit additions based on comments from the design review committee last fall and initial staff and consultant remarks. And we're still working on some of those remarks from inland wetlands. Access to and from the site will be via a access, um, one, one way entrance in off of Hubbard Road. And one out from Hubbard Road. The main entrances to the buildings are centered on the buildings as they are facing toward the parking lots. With secondary entrances on the ends. Here and here and here and here on both buildings. It's associated with, with each main entrance to a zone framed by landscaping, landscape, um, islands. To allow firefighting access. We, we did have, um, quite a bit of feedback from the, um, fire department. And one of the things they did ask for was for a larger area here with no parking in front of the building. For emergency access. There's also fire access on three sides of the Clark Building. And, um, three sides of the Fitzgerald Building. This is another, um, another access which is strictly for fire access at the request of the fire department. Where they can reach in in their ladder truck, this is, this is cited, so the ladder truck can reach all the way down along the backside. The layout also accounts for some community areas for the residents. Where we're proposing tables with benches. Um, for each unit and also, um. Parking or, excuse me, bicycle, um, stands and we are proposing a, um, a path down to the river for access. I'll let Rich Reynolds, um, talk about the grading plan in a few minutes. Uh, landscaping. We'll go back to the landscaping plan. There we go. Who's landscaping, we're, are proposing using mostly native trees. Um, except at the entrance to the building, we are proposing using a castra. Which are flanked at the entrance areas here and here and here and here. Um, this tree, um, we find provides very nice canopy for, um, entrances into the, um, into the building. Um, and some, and actually some shading as well. Uh, and we also have a mixture of tolerant species in the parking areas such as linden and black gum. Red maple along Hubbard Road. And dogwood, dogwoods, proposed dogwoods in, um, the community area. On the east side of the stormwater management area, um, we have a plethora of native trees. Such as proposed as black cherry, oak, hickories and cedars. And native plantings in the, uh, proposed four bay areas. He, uh, dogwood gray, gray dogwood, summer sweet, common elderberry, fultow wood. And then, um, interspersed with, uh, other planting or, um, native, uh, grass and hedge plantings. Site plan or the, uh, site lighting. We are proposing site lighting throughout the site with, um, the ends of the bu- buildings having a wall pack. Just on the ends and no proposed lighting on the, um, backside of the buildings. More, this was also at the request of, uh, going through inland wetlands, not to be shedding light on this, uh, wetland area in the back. Underneath the canopy, there will be soft lighting and we have, um, mostly proposed, uh. Single, single, um. Um, light poles with just a double, uh, here and a double here. Um, and where required, there, there are full cutoffs in the back to prevent any leak off lighting on, uh, adjoining properties. Uh, and we also have lighting here to help illuminate the entrance and exit. There is over here on this light pole across the street, there's one of those big stadium lights that kind of faces in this general area. For the, uh, school bus area. Other than that, there are no, there's no other lighting on the streets. At this time, Rich, I'd like to hand it over to Rich Reynolds to, and he'll, uh. Discuss the, the grading. I will, Rich, I will have the grading plan up for you.
I, I can, I have it up so I can just share my screen if that works.
That, that's worked for me.
Can everybody see my screen? Okay, uh, Richard Reynolds, um, LRC Group, project engineer, one sixty West Street in Cromwell. Want to just go over, um, the site grading, let me just zoom this out a little bit.
This is, uh, Jamie Stein, town planner. We are currently seeing a word document that says proposed project description.
How about that?
Now you got it.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, what we, what I'm showing on my screen here is the, um, site grading. Um, and the storm drainage, uh, for the project. Site improvements for the project include the two buildings like previously described, um, a hundred and twenty five parking spaces. Which, which will service the, um, two buildings. Uh, storm drainage companion system which consists of catch basins, um, storm drainage pipe. That will discharge to a stormwater management area, uh, stormwater for, for bay and stormwater infiltration area. Um, also included are site lighting, septic systems, one on each parcel. So here's a septic system for the John W Clark Building and a septic system for the Francis J Fitzgerald Building. Um, as previously mentioned, a, um, walking path is proposed. Um, we show it kind of meandering down on this side of the Francis J Fitzgerald Building, um, to the West River. The construction of that, uh, footpath is just gonna be clearing of brush. Um, no major clearing is proposed, um, it's gonna be remain in its, uh, natural state. Um, and the final location will be coordinated with, uh, town staff. Um, stormwater management, um, areas and, um, dry wells for the roof areas. So you can see here, there's a couple of dry wells here, a couple of dry wells here. A couple of dry wells there and a couple of dry wells there handle the runoff from the roof areas from both buildings. The, um, storm water in the parking area. Flows to catch basins and into stormwater drainage pipe into the stormwater management area. The, um, storm water for the project is been designed to, um, handle the. Two through a hundred year storm events without overtopping the structures. Um, stormwater within the parking area will flow to the catch basins. Um, catch basins have four foot deep sumps to trap sediment and debris. Catch basin number six, this one over here will have a hooded outlet of snout, um, which will, uh, trap sediment and debris. From entering the stormwater for bay, wetland for bay over here. Stormwater discharge from the, um, stormwater management area is going to be through exfiltration. Through the bottom of the stormwater management area. So no point just discharges proposed, um, in the design of this stormwater, uh, management. As previously mentioned, the dry wells will handle, um, stormwater from the roof areas. Um, water from roof areas is, is defined or is, um, stated as, uh, the cleanest of. Um, stormwater runoff, so we were proposing to put it directly into the ground into dry wells. Also, the dry wells will aid in, um, groundwater recharge and reduce the volume required. And the size of this stormwater management area. Um, in place, uh, permeability tests were conducted, um, throughout the property. The soils have been determined to be highly permeable, uh, more of a sandy loom pretty much throughout the, um, property. As mentioned before, the stormwater management area includes a wetland for bay. And, and, uh, infiltration area and there is a five foot wide filter berm. So what happens is that, um, water is discharged into the stormwater for bay. Um, any sediment would settle out, uh, prior to the water flowing through this filter berm and into the, um, stormwater infiltration area. Which, um, flows through the underlying soils. Um, each of the parcels is going to have its own, um, leaching system. You can see that there are, um, septic tanks, pump chambers and, uh, leaching systems. Primary and reserve leaching, um, systems for each building. Um, deep test holes and percolation tests have been conducted on the property and witnessed by the local health department and state of Connecticut Department of Health. The septic system design plan has been submitted to local and state health, health departments for their review. Um, the local health department provided a letter, uh, dated, uh, March twenty second of this year. Stating in part that the documented soil testing is favorable and supports the subdivision request of the project. Uh, we are going to have, um, two proposed dumpster areas, one in the backside here and one over on this side. Um, as mentioned before, um, we had many conversations with the, uh, fire marshal regarding, um. Movement onsite, um, safe access to the, uh, fronts of the buildings. And providing, uh, an accessible, uh, space for them to park emergency vehicles so that they could access the, um, the buildings. Um, one feature we're adding is a, um, flagpole with, um, monumented, monumented plaques. Here, um, in the center of the, um, project is just a nice feature that we're gonna add to the project. Um, each building is going to be serviced by, um, public water. So we're gonna have a fire and a domestic water service from, um, in existing main and Hubbard Road. The existing main is gonna be extended down and beyond the Francis J Fitzgerald Building, um, within the shoulder area of Hubbard Road. Uh, this has been provided to us, this design has been provided to us, um, from the water company, um, so this is their, um. Their approved, um. Layout and, um, design. This plan right here shows our erosion control that are proposed for the project. We've gone, um, through many iterations of this with the peer review regarding, um. Erosion control and, um, how to stabilize slopes and, um, keep, um, sediment out of the, um. Stormwater management area, so we're proposing a temporary sediment trap here with some swales. Um, which will allow the, uh, water to run to the swale and be collected in this temporary sediment trap. Uh, which will allow the sediment to settle out, yeah, prior to, um, water leaving the temporary sediment trap. Each catch basin will have, um, silt sacks, um, which will, um, trap sediment. Prior to entering the constructed, uh, drainage system. Um, the entrance drives and exit drive to the project have been regraded. Um, so that all the water from the parcel is collected in the drainage system. And no water, um, goes out into Hubbard Road for, uh, any and all storm events. So this, this, um, storm drainage system, it is designed to handle the, the hundred year storm event. And the pipe sizes have been, uh, sized accordingly, so any flow that, um, runs down these drives will end up in the drainage system. And, uh, be piped to the stormwater management area. Just a side note that Hubbard Road and town drainage systems are generally designed for ten year storm events. Um, and we've designed ours for a hundred, um, just to, so that we can, um, confidently not add any water to Hubbard Road. And provide any nuisance out onto Hubbard Road. Um, included in the, in the, um, plan set are the, um. Septic system design plans for each lot. These plans show the, um. Soil testing data, um, test hole data, the depth of the, the test holes, uh, percolation rates. Um, it shows the design of the leaching systems, um, pump chambers, pipe sizes, things like that. Um, as mentioned before, these have been reviewed by local health. And, um. Each one of these, um, parcels has their own system. So this one for, uh, the Francis J Fitzgerald Building soil testing data is included. All the design criteria required by local health and the state department of health is included. And then just the landscaping plan we talked about before. Um, construction details are included in these. In the plan set. Um, so that's all I have. If you have any questions, uh, please let me know.
I actually have, uh, something else to add. Um, if I can share my screen again, please.
There you go.
This is also a subdivision. So we are proposing on subdividing, um, to, this into two lots, which will be under two separate, um, ownerships. And also recently we've, um, discussing with the client and I believe the client's starting a conversation possibly with the town. I'm not sure, but, um. I'm trying to, okay, is a dedication of some, some land as open space to, to the town. Or to a conservation, um, entity of the town. Um, we are proposing, in, in that, excuse me, based on the lot area, that would be seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty square feet. And what we are proposing is doing this along the West River. I realize that according to your, um. Regulations in the subdivision, um, I think that's two seventy two, forty one, two B one. That, um, this would require a three quarters vote, three fourths vote by the commission. Because, um, it is all upwind, or excuse me, all within the wetland area. But we figured that this is an area that would seize the most. But we figured that this is an area that would seize the most youth by the public as people that would come down fishing. And when I was looking at this earlier today, I realized that what we're doing, we're connecting town land. The town of Guilford, I believe this is the fire department or the police department land that kind of wraps around the 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 rocket, the racquetball club actually is this piece of park, this piece right in here. They own to the center line of the stream and then runs to the south. And then actually this is all town of Guilford on the other side of Hubbard Road. And I believe they even own the town owns this parcel on the, on the east side of the West River too. So really what we would be doing is starting to connect the corridor from north to south of Guilford land. So I wanted to bring that up as well. And I'll leave the presentation plan up and I guess we, we're open to questions. Thank you.
Terrific. As I mentioned earlier, unless commissioners have some questions they'd like to ask. To begin, we do have several memos to get through. So I will take it back to you. If you'd like us to go through those, maybe those will generate some questions. We'll go from there. Are you good with that?
Yes, I am.
Hey, Phil.
Yes.
Um, just a quick question. Has a traffic study been done? Or not traffic lights on Durham Road and Hubbard, not on Long Hill Road and Hubbard Roads. I'm just with this number of residents and the number of cars will be involved. I was curious whether any anything in the way of traffic study has been done.
Uh, no, there has not. Square footage wise, we're under the thresholds for the OSTO requirements for traffic, for amount of traffic, excuse me, amount of parking and square footage of building.
Out of curiosity, since you've mentioned it, what is the requirement from a size standpoint? Do you know?
200 parking spaces and 100,000 square feet gross, gross square feet of building.
And, and your buildings are how many square, roughly 46,000, give or take?
Yes.
Sorry, I did, I did some quick math. I don't know how close I was or not.
I'm impressed. That's pretty good.
Well, why don't we tackle some of the memos? And then we'll see if that leads to some more questions. Sean, do you want to grab the first one from Kevin McGee, the environmental planner? Sean, you there? All right, I'll kick it. How about, how about Frank? Do you want to grab the first one, Frank?
I'm, I'm back, but.
So, uh, in that case, Sean, why don't you grab the first one from Kevin McGee?
Yeah, Jimmy, can you put it up?
Yes, I'd be happy to. John, can you please stop sharing your screen?
Yep.
Thank you. Just give me one moment here.
Thanks.
Yep.
Jimmy, I've got it.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Thank you.
Did it for first to Gilroy Plating and zoning commission from Kim McGee, environmental planner regarding subdivision and site plan approval, Hubbard Road LLC, Hubbard Road, Gilbert, Connecticut. Just 437 Assessor Map 79 Lot 48. The applicant is proposing a to re-subdivide industrial zone lot, create two lots for a CGS eight dash 30G affordable housing project, which includes two 50 unit apartment buildings, parking area, septic systems, utilities and stormwater management area. Inland wetlands and the West River are located on the east side on the east side property and upon it's located south of the property. But the commission is currently conducting a public hearing regarding the regulated activity application and a subdivision referral application for the development of this property. The Illinois Wetland Commission voted at their February 9th, 2022, meaning that the applicant is a significant activity and voted to take jurisdiction of the whole site as a regulated activity due to the size of development. The size and sanitary systems each producing up to 7,500 gallons per day of wastewater and the interconnection with the stormwater system with a concern for the West River and associated wetlands. That seems to be it.
But so maybe Kevin, can you enlighten us as to what that means? Kevin is our inland wetlands and water course liaison, and he also sits on inland wetlands, if I'm not, am I correct?
No, you are correct. And what basically that means is taking jurisdiction over the whole site means that do the due to the situational complexity, we're actually, that allows us to go outside the 100 foot review zone to monitor any kind of, and any activity that may adversely affect the, the wetland. That's basically it. Normally, normally we would, we would be restricted to the 100 foot, obviously. But when you take jurisdiction over an entire site, we now get review of the whole site, even outside above and beyond 100 foot.
We're still waiting on inland wetlands approval. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Or at least a ruling. I'm not going to force, you know.
Right. I just, yeah. Decision. Yes.
But Kevin, what, what are you specifically looking at and for?
Well, we were looking to any kind of septic or stormwater impacts to the West River. Any kind of septic or stormwater impacts to the adjacent wetlands on an adjacent property. That's, that's it for the most part. I mean, how specific do you want me to get?
Kevin, do you consider also for the large parking lot with like gasoline spillage oil dropping from vehicles? And maybe it's not that big a problem, but that was something that would get into the water table, right? And maybe work downward towards the river.
I, I think the hopes, the hopes are by both the applicant and the wetlands commission that those things would be contained onsite and, and dealt with within the stormwater infiltration system and the sedimentation area.
Okay, terrific. Frank, we have a memo from Janice Plaziac, our town engineer. Would you like to grab that one?
Sure. This one is dated February 9th, 2022 from Janice Plaziac, town engineer to the planning and zoning commission. Hubbard Road Affordable Housing Plan, map 79 Lot 48. I reviewed the submitted subdivision in the A dash 30G Affordable Housing Project Application and offered the following comments. The stop bar should be painted across the entire exit drive to reinforce one-way traffic. Light poles are located within the parking aisles at the intersecting corners of parking spaces. The light pole should be in island so as not to obstruct the parking spaces and to be protected from the vehicle strikes. The plan set lacks details on the lights for the site to confirm they are cut off fixtures, full cutoff fixtures and will not result in glare. The only detail for lighting provided in the plan set is for a light on a flagpole. Detailed cut sheets should be provided for building mounted light fixtures in site lighting. I recommend the applicant install sidewalks along the front edge of the property to serve as a residential development of this size. The area is in an industrial zone with heavy truck traffic and school bus traffic due to the current land uses on Hubbard Road. Sidewalks will provide a safe area for pedestrians, including a safe area for schoolchildren to wait for the bus. The town is in the process of extending sidewalks along Route 77 up to Hubbard Road. Sidewalks along Hubbard Road are a recommendation of the Safe Streets Task Force in their draft plans. I recommend the property owner grant an easement to the town for public access to the river. This area of the river is frequented by fishermen. I recommend the stormwater discharge pipe for the stormwater basins be removed further to the south to a more level area to avoid potential of erosion and move the pipe out of the way of the public access area as I described above. The stormwater management system and the septic system for the project are currently undergoing review by others. Additional engineering comments for the project may be forthcoming as a result of those reviews and any subsequent changes to the plans. The applicant should allow all the FEMA flood zone for the property on the grading drainage and utility plan, including the floodway and the 500 year flood plain, in addition to the 100 year flood plain, which is shown. The floodplain ordinance for the town has a compensatory storage and equal conveyance requirement. Any filing in the 100 year flood plain would require compliance with this ordinance. Since development is taking place on two separate lots, but the site functions as one, appropriate cross easements for operations and maintenance should be provided.
Amy, does that all make sense with you? And are those recommendations from Janice acceptable?
No.
Okay.
The, I would say the stop bar, yes, that that's painted. That's not an issue. The light poles, I think they, they have already been addressed. Uh, the sidewalks, that, that's, that's not something that's agreeable to by the developer, the applicant at all. It's not required by the subdivision regulations. There's been other cases out there. It says sidewalks that lead nowhere are dangerous. This is in the middle of Hubbard Road. It does not connect to Route 77. There, it's not contemplated that there's, you have the entrance way where there's plenty of flat land where if there are any schoolchildren, they can stand on the side of the property there. I, I've been down Hubbard Road many times. I've yet to see heavy truck traffic. I've never seen heavy truck traffic on, on Hubbard Road. It, the the property ends at the middle of the West River. So where that like, kind of like that bridge is on Hubbard Road, you, you didn't have a side, what she's contemplating would be a sidewalk going up to halfway to there and then down a portion of the property and they just end. In fact, with the Safe Streets Task Force and their draft plan, I believe it's for the town to consider doing that, not ask a developer to put a portion in in front of their property. Hasn't been asked of anybody else on Hubbard Road to put any sidewalks in. In fact, there's none on the opposite side of the street where the bus terminal is or any other parts of that where the veterinary hospital is or the like. The, the grant of an easement to the town for access to the river, we are proposing deeding the open space to the town, which is, I would assume better than just having an easement. The stormwater discharge pipe basin, I, I'll let Richard John talk to that. I think those things have been addressed. I do recall Rich discussing that there was a five year flood plain, 500 year flood plain on the, on the drawings. I, I'd like to say that between inland wetlands and things going on here, the, the applicant feels a little bit discriminated against due to the affordability issue with this project. Comments had been made that, I mean, in this aspect, they took control inland wetlands of the entire site. As you heard Kevin, Kevin say normally they restrict it to 100 foot review. There was a project of significant size, the DeGeneres Project on State Street, which had, I believe, 25 two, two and three bedroom units, which exceeds 50 bedrooms. That was not deemed a significant activity that was not required to have any public hearing on that. There was nothing, they even had buildings within the 100 foot review. They, they had the reserved septic in the 100 foot reserve review. There, there was no third party consultants that were hired by the town and charged to that applicant. This applicant has paid over $21,000 for the town's consultants with the inland wetlands. That's just seemed to be not trying to work, but trying to be antagonistic mostly. It's been a very difficult and frustrating situation. As a matter of fact, when they determined to hire the third party consultant, one of the members said, we should, you know, definitely need to hire this third party consultant due to controversial affordable housing project. So, you know, we're trying to work with everybody. We've hired, you know, environmental people. As a matter of fact, I believe, I believe it was you said about the, the budding property being like a material storage property. And that is the bone of contention right now within Lynn Wetlands is that they, there's some talk that the, the septic and issues might affect that pond. The, the West River pristine, there's no issue with the West River. Everybody said that's protected, but what we're concerned about is a silt pond in the middle of a rock quarry material place. That's, it's, it's, it's mind boggling.
So, I'm not, I'm not sure. Since the wetlands hearing is still an open hearing, I'm not really sure this is the time or the place.
So, so Amy, what I'll do is I've noted your objections on, on the memo. I'm not sure we're in a position to either say yes or no on those, but we, because we're not going to be acting on this tonight anyway. But, you know, we'll give it, you know, your, your concerns about those full weight.
Which I understand, but I, I believe when, when Mr. Clark was speaking and talked about taking this whole property as a significant activity, which it's normally restricted to 100 foot review, I just thought that that opened the door for that response and, and on that. So.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to add to that, since I've had a little bit of time to sit here and actually kind of think about, think about that. So, I mean, let me, let me clarify and provide some context with that, just for the public record. So normally do. I think the commission felt that due to the size and scope of this project relative to the size of the site and relative to, especially the West River, which what we can all agree is a pretty iconic natural resource in town, right? So that, of that fact alone would probably is going to garner a lot more attention from the wetlands commission than your average site. Now also too, if you add in the fact, and I believe it's from our natural resource inventory, there I think it's appendix E, where it lists about, I don't, I want to say about a dozen to a dozen and a half significant natural resources in town. Okay? One of those is the West River and any of those resources, when any kind of construction is going or activity is going to happen around them. The natural resource inventory specifies that an extra layer of scrutiny be given to those significant natural resources. So between the wetlands commission's concern about it and the natural resource inventory mentioning something like that, we felt we were very much within our rights to have, you know, a third party review. So just again, to provide some context. I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm going to move to the, the next memo, which is from Sonia Marino. Let's see, who, who are we going to chuck this one to? Scott, have you grabbed one?
Uh, to the planning zoning commission from Sonia Marino, RSMGH dated March 22nd, 2022. RE Connecticut Affordable Housing Initiative LLC, Hubbard Road, map 79 Lot 48, Guilford, Connecticut. Oh, six, four, three, seven, sub-surface sewage disposal system, SSDS review. The proposed application referenced above by LRC Group dated October 6th, 2021. Last revised February 1st, February 11th, 2022, has been reviewed by the local health department. Last revised February first, uh February eleventh, twenty twenty two, has been reviewed by the local health department. The project description on the plan states that the development will be seven thousand five hundred GPD. Um gallons per. GPD fifty bedrooms or under for each lot. Therefore, each project will be under the CT Department of Public Health. Environmental uh engineering department and the um LHD jurisdiction. Please note that the LHD. Uh reached out to the CTD P H E P to ensure that they are part of the review process. Please see the attached circular letter. Twenty seventeen dash seventeen that concerns legislation. Public Act uh seventeen dash one forty six, section thirty. That affected subsurface sewage disposal system jurisdiction. Please note that the review is based on the criteria set forth in the onsite sewage disposal regulations. And technical standards for the subsurface sewage disposal systems for systems. Seven thousand five hundred GPD or less. The LHD requested additional soil testing to be witnessed by the LHD, uh the CTD P H E P. The applicant's engineers and a social soil scientist. The additional testing was completed on February first, twenty twenty two. All representatives mentioned uh above were in attendance. The plan was then updated to include the additional soil test and addressed comments from the second review. By the LHD. The subdivision requests of two lots each at seven thousand five hundred GPD or under has documented soil testing that is favorable. And supports the subdivision request of seven thousand five hundred GPT on each site. In the past, comments have been given to the town's land use commissions regarding the feasibility of subdivision. Lot line changes and other land use activity that impact properties on subsurface sewage disposal systems. Final approval cannot be given before the lots are subdivided because the lots need to be in separate ownership. The current plan that was submitted to the LHD and the CTD P H E P for review and approval. Is in the process of being reviewed by the CTD P H E P after going through a review by the LHD. Preliminary comments from CTD P H E P are ones that do not affect the gallons per day of the site. Please note that only the final septic system plan is supposed to be sent up to the CTD P H E P for approval.
I think we should have some more acronyms.
Um Attorney Bloom, do you have copies of this memo?
I, yes, I do.
Good, I I don't. Jamie, I don't think we need to go through the memos, correct? From the state of Connecticut Department of Public Health, we could just.
Yeah. It is on the website. Uh I can show it if you'd like, whatever, whatever you like.
I mean. I think if people people should at their convenience, uh take a peek at them uh before our next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, Phil, uh going through the checklist with the O's and checks is not feasible.
I've I've never seen uh this submitted before. It's a town of Guilford Public Health. Have you seen one of these before, Jamie?
And. Uh I'll I'll take that one on the chin, Phil. Uh that was a mistake on my part adding that website. It's more of an internal. Checklist from the health department. The memo that was just read into the record was the intention. Uh and uh the memo does reference. A um circular letter from uh the state, I believe, uh and and I do have a copy of that if.
Great. Uh we don't need to go through that, but thank you for taking one on the chin. I'm glad we asked as opposed to. Go through that. Um. Is there anything else that we need? To enter into the record on this, Jamie, or those all of memoirs?
Uh I believe that covers it. Let me just take a quick look.
Um. So what I'm gonna do is kick it out for any questions um from people. Uh and then at. Some point we'll continue this to our next meeting, which is. But I'm bum bum on, sorry about that. Uh April twentieth.
Um. This is. This is Scott, and I just had a couple of quick items.
Right.
Jamie. And in preparation for the second meeting, could you um? Uh Kevin McGee's memo did not state, usually he states whether uh the Guilford Land Trust is interested in the. Uh ten percent that's being proposed. Um so I would be willing, like to hear from him. On what they would, if if they would like that land or if they would propose something else.
Sure, you can pop up on that.
The second is um the Safe Streets Ordin- um Commission was mentioned, not Commission, whatever they're called. Um and I was wondering if we can get a statement from them concerning uh. The sidewalk question. I know. I I I know that the attorney Bloom mentioned a bunch of projects that don't have sidewalks, but the the Safe Streets is is recent. Um and it's, I know it's something that we're really looking. To do in the future going forward, so uh if we get something from them, that'd be great.
Thank you, Scott. I will reach out to the task force uh and and.
Thank you.
And and I I would just um uh so with our next meeting coming up on the twentieth. Um I guess I'd pose another question to Kevin. Um do you, do you have a sense of how long? Illinois Wetlands will take? I mean, we have, we would have some determination of what your. Opinion is on this project by the twentieth of April, but yeah.
I was thinking about that because I had a feeling one of you was going to ask me that. Um I really don't. I'd like to think as soon as possible. Um I've been, but we just, we just got new documentation as recently as today. Um what that means for our next meeting, which will be a week from tonight, I'm not sure, but so there's still information going back and forth. So I I maybe. Maybe the next meeting, maybe. The month after that, probably the most.
Jamie, the timelines are we running up against on this?
Yeah, thank you, uh Phil. I ha- have asked the town's land use attorney, Mr. Charles Andrews, to join us this evening to go through. Uh this uh idea of timeframe, so Chuck, if you could please just uh answer that question.
Sure, uh Chuck Andrews, uh attorney for the commission. Um yeah, the the question, we opened the public hearing tonight. And what what there's, the the statutory timeframe applies to both these applications, and I did check with the. Uh attorney Bloom and she she agreed, and and the normal statutory timeframe is you're probably where you have sixty five days to open the public hearing from the date of receipt. And the application was withdrawn and resubmitted, so we're within that timeframe. And now you're in, so there's there's a question for you is when, how long do we have to complete the public hearing and to render the decision? So you have thirty five days as of right. To uh keep the hearing open. So that would mean that would get you into your first, uh you you'd have the second meeting in April and your first meeting in. May as of right. Um and the applicant can grant a a up to sixty five day extension as well to keep the hearing open. Uh you know, i- if they consent to that. And the reasons, I'm assuming that you may want to keep the hearing open or you may not, because there's a concomitant. Hearing going on before Wetlands. And I, and there've been a number of Wetlands hearings. And there is a Wetlands hearing, I understand, for next week. Uh that that Kevin referred to. So but then uh so so there's the issue of keeping a hearing open, and then whenever you close it, you have sixty five days to decide. Decide it, and then in any event, you have uh. Apart from any of those timelines, you have sixty five days after Wetlands makes its decision. So even if for some reason Wetlands kept the thing open. Uh till June or something, you would, you would, in your timeframe got swallowed up, then. You get automatically another sixty five days after uh Wetlands decides. To to render your decision, so.
I just want to make sure we're not running up on a wall.
Yeah, no, I I don't, I don't think so. I think you can keep, you you got two meetings as of right. And I'm assuming, you know, the applicant is acting in good faith, there's good faith reasons to keep it open, the applicant would consent to a longer one. And uh and then we we get it done. That's so that that's kind of what we're looking.
So so but Chuck, does inland Wetlands have a time limit as we do?
Yes, they have a time limit. Um I think they. They uh have opened their public hearing and they have uh. I I don't know where they are. I haven't followed the Wetlands timeframe, but uh they they may have a. Uh I know they have a continued public hearing. They started before you did. I don't know, you may know uh well, when the timeframe to complete the public hearing in Wetlands is. And then they have thirty days after whenever the hearing is closed to render their decision.
Okay, okay, okay. Alright, so they they could continue for a while, which elongates this thing. For quite a bit, potentially.
They could, but I think they've, I think that the hope, I mean, you've heard Kevin say the hope is to possibly conclude the public hearing by this this month, but perhaps even if it goes another month. Then it would uh conclude it next month, because there has been, I, my understanding is there has been a a number of hearings and revisions and. So there has been some, it it it's not like they're starting from point A, that there's been a lot of. Uh a a lot of discussion and deliberations and hopefully. You know, they they're not reinventing the wheel, so I they're getting closer, so. Whatever that means.
Yes.
I believe the uh Wetlands timeframe to close a public hearing is slightly different than. Planning and zoning. I think theirs is sixty five to start the public hearing and thirty five to close the public hearing, so they have a thirty five day window. From when they open it.
That's correct.
Yeah, they 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 do, yeah, and they can get another sixty five days if the applicant extends it, but the difference. I think the only difference in the timeframe, you normally think sixty five, thirty five, sixty five. With a sixty five days the applicant can consent to, it's the same for Wetlands, except on the back end, they only have. I believe it's thirty five or thirty or thirty five days to decide instead of sixty five. And that's intentional because. Um they they're supposed to, the the. The contemplation is that Wetlands should has a shorter timeframe because. There may be a a concomitant zoning one, and they want Wetlands to decide before zoning.
That makes, that makes sense.
Um are there any other questions from commissioners?
A quick question, and I might have missed this, but is, are these buildings sprinklered?
Yes.
Yes, they're sprinkled.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Are there any questions from the public at this time? Um would anyone like to speak in favor or against this application at this time? Okay, with no comments or questions, um would someone like to make a motion to continue this? Public hearing to our next meeting of. April twentieth, I believe I said.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you very much. I'll call the vote. Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
Frank D'Andrea.
Aye.
Bill Freeman.
Aye.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Kevin Clark.
Yes.
I will also vote to continue this. Thank you very much, Attorney Bloom and and for all the staff that presented. Um we look forward to seeing you at the next meeting and. Um hopefully moving this forward as expeditiously as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, uh let's go to the. Yeah, I'm sorry, too much paper.
Eric, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you, I I will depart if that's okay, or.
Sure, Chuck.
Okay.
Thanks for showing up.
Great to see everyone.
Thank you.
Someone you haven't met, but.
Mr. Chairman, uh Amy Bloom, again, just one thing, we do have on the regular meeting. The site plan, so. Just as a matter of business, it really goes with the subdivision, so. I'm assuming we're gonna look to continue that as well to April twentieth.
Uh if that's fine with you, that's what we'd like to do.
That I I think so, because I think we basically have been. We've already dawned our presentation with the site plan, subdivision altogether.
Okay, um so would someone like to make a motion? To uh move, continue the, or to move the site plan to our next meeting of April twentieth? Thank you. Very good, uh Kevin Clark.
Yes.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Frank D'Andrea.
Yes.
I'm Cosgrove.
Yes.
I shall also vote yes, very good. Uh someone like to make a motion to. Close the public hearings and then we can address the CAM application. Um. And do other business.
Done.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you very much. Uh I'll call the vote. Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
Frank D'Andrea.
Aye.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Kevin Clark.
Aye.
I shall also vote for that. Alright, do we have a motion on? The glasses to Guilford Point Map twenty seven lot seven?
We do.
Would you be so kind?
Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a coastal site plan for change in this glass to Guilford Point Drive. They keep on changing, I don't know what the official one is. Can we change this to make sure it's the right one? I heard lane, I heard road, I heard drive. Uh map.
Consult the map, thank you.
Thanks, lot seven, zone R three for a tear down and rebuild of the single family home within a hundred feet of a coastal resource as shown. On the submitted plans, the approved plans are. Uh glass residence preliminary drawings to Guilford Point. Guilford, Connecticut, dated February twenty two, twenty twenty two. With revisions to the new house slash dormer. Uh and also CAM site plan slash B one hundred A analysis prepared for James Joyce Glass, number two Guilford Point Drive, Guilford, Connecticut, dated March fifth, twenty twenty two. With revisions, tear down slash rebuild CAM seven health. Uh this application is approved with the following conditions. One, that the final as-built surveys be submitted for all proposed structures, including height of structures and other improvements as specified before certificate of occupancy. Uh approval by the zoning enforcement officer. Two, the town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer shall be notified to inspect the sedimentation erosion control measures prior to set works, soil stockpile shall be contained by silt fencing and or hay bales. Per the approved plan. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable materials installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Three, the site should be inspected daily to ensure that all construction debris has been properly disposed of in a covered dumpster. Four, average finish grade must be calculated before construction. And detailed in the building permit application, architectural drawings submitted for the application do not. Include a calculation of the average finish grade. Which is used to calculate average building height and maximum building height. Zoning compliance at the time of building permit application regarding the height of the building cannot be determined until average height. And Mexican maximum height. Are calculated and shown on the architectural plans. Five, the applicant will work with the town engineer to ensure flood floodplain compliance. A flood hazard permit certifying finished floor elevation shall accompany application for building permits. Uh this application is approved based on the finding that it conforms to zoning code and development. Is in accordance with the town's coastal area management regulations. The coastal site plan is effective on April fifteenth. Twenty twenty two and upon filing with the town clerk.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, uh Jamie, uh question, I assume Michael Harkin had a copy of these? And.
I don't know if I shared them with him. We had some um last minute communication with Michael regarding that. Uh average height calculation that you see in the motion. Uh the architectural firm has provided us with that calculation as of this afternoon. Uh Steve had communication with Michael, and I believe that he is aware of those conditions, isn't fine with them. And is fine with them.
Yeah, I mean, usually they're kind of. Hanging around to the end. For obvious reasons, he decided um he would just call in the morning and find out. Um so we have a a motion, we have a second, uh any comments, questions, discussion? No, okay, uh I'll call the vote then. Uh Kevin Clark.
Aye.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Frank D'Andrea.
Affirmative.
Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
I shall also vote yes, very good. If you could um just make sure that uh Michael gets a copy of those, that would be terrific. Uh next. We have new applications um to receive Martha Pacilio. Wesley Middleton and Nancy Jackson, four, six, four, Tanner Marsh Road, map eighty one lot four. Zone R five, application for a seven lot subdivision. Uh we will receive any idea when we're gonna hear that or what's gonna happen with that, Jamie?
Yes, thank you, Phil. Uh we, I have instituted a bit of a change uh and. Asked for applicants to respect a deadline to submitting an application of two weeks prior to a meeting. So um we got this uh application a little bit uh under two weeks prior to this meeting, so we chose. To uh. So uh, we chose to uh, bring it to the April twentieth meeting.
Okay, so we'll see this for twenty twenty-two. Good. And then uh, David Lee. But let, Lesio, one thirty-four Trolley Road map, eight lot seventy-four zone R two. Coastal site planned to add a second floor and patio off master bedroom, Steven set public hearing date for five four twenty-two. Um, so we can do that. And then it's like there are a couple of mandatory referrals. I still, you know, I've been sitting at this commission a long time. It's still flabbergasted me why these come to us, but nonetheless, uh, Bill, do you want to grab the first one? Um, from First Selectman Matt Howie dated March twenty-first.
Yep, sure. Uh, mandatory referral, the Board of Selectmen and its March twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two meeting recommended. The Planning and Zoning Commission under CGS eight dash twenty-four. The various Board of Education Improvement Projects being proposed for bonding. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Sure, just go, go for it.
Okay, Z E O report, an update on the status of the Guilford Village West Construction Project.
Do we want to just, we should probably just read in the mandatory referral letter? Do you have that?
I might here, have it. Yes, I do. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
I was unclear, I guess. My apologies.
No, no, I gotta find it. It's in one of these stacks here.
Always blame the chairman.
Oh, no.
Don't make me eject you, Sean.
Yay. I am not seeing it in my.
It's from.
Fourteen.
Yeah, it's from Matt Howie to Philip Johnson, Guilford Planning and Zoning, fifty Boston Street mandatory referral to Philip. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute eight dash twenty-four, I am forwarding the following request. To you for your consideration at your April sixth meeting. Mandatory referral, the Board of Selectmen at its March twenty-first meeting recommend the Planning and Zoning Commission under CGS eight dash two-four. The various Board of Education Improvement Projects being proposed for bonding include kitchen renovations at Baldwin Middle School. Library renovations at Cox Elementary School. Uh, office space, oh, I'm sorry, renovations to the building at five nine five New England Road. To convert into central office space, replacement of playground at Guilford Lakes Elementary School. Replacement of tennis courts at the Guilford High School and future project design costs for various town schools. Thank you for your consideration. So it was referred to us, do we then thank them for the referral and send it back? Okay, someone like to make a motion to thank the First Selectman for the referral.
So.
I make a motion.
Uh, by a show of hands, I think we can just cover that one. All in favor? All right, very good. Uh, let's see. And then we have uh, David White and Crystal Gaudio, eighty Boulder Road, Guilford, Connecticut. Administrative approval for minor modification to twenty-three Sawpit Road. Map thirty-four lot thirty, zone R three coastal site plan to relocate an existing shed on the property. What, what are we doing with this, Jamie?
Sure, I, I'll address these quickly because I think uh, we don't want to skip and miss the Z E O report. Uh, so I don't want to, we can go back to that. Um, in the last meeting, I had communicated to the board. That I am, or the commission, that I am hoping to formalize uh, what I think in the past was done. Um, you know, just sort of in communication with land use staff uh, in town. For minor modifications to approved site plans. Uh, this first one with David White and Crystal Gaudio. Uh, I think you probably remember this coastal site plan where the applicant was going to hand destruct and reconstruct. Uh, their, the home that they had acquired. Um, in this particular instance. Uh, there was a shed and its particular location on the site plan. They uh, were going to kind of rebuild it in place or remodel it in place. But they're actually deconstructing it and moving it further away from the coastal resource and reconstructing it on another portion of the lot. Uh, the second one here, BW Bishops and Sons. Uh, if you remember the Little Red Barn uh, site plan that came before the commission with the um. Addition of uh, music and other activities at the Little Red Barn. Um, they are adding a twelve by twenty-foot temporary storage shed. Uh, this too, uh, Steve and I have reviewed these um, proposals and consider them minor in nature. Uh, meaning that we would just communicate them uh, to the commission for full transparency. Uh, but also have approved them uh, administratively. Uh, and so they have memos accompanying them. Um, and because uh, this is a practice that um. Uh, is common in other municipalities, but I didn't uh, quite see any formalized way of doing it here. Uh, for full transparency because, you know, in full disclosure, sometimes this can be misused. In terms of a minor modification actually being a change of use or actually being something major. So uh, we do put all eyes on this to ensure that they are indeed minor modifications that don't trigger anything else. And then we uh, I, I prefer to disclose them in the uh, other commission business section of the.
Thank you for, for paying attention to those items. Um, would you like to present your Z E O report at this point?
Steve, if you could.
Sure. So I just wanted to go over a couple of quick things. Uh, one of them being Guilford Village West. Uh, which is, was a large project approved by the commission and subsequently. Uh, extended over the past ten years or so. Um, I have met with the project site engineer. And uh, we are in the process of scheduling a, a meeting with all town staff department heads. With uh, the construction company managing the site work Cherry Hill Construction. And the uh, engineering firm Dyna Core. Uh, so we'll, we will be getting some updates uh, with regard to possible changing plans on that site. Uh, and I've also gone to the site and done some uh, inspections recently to ensure compliance with the sediment erosion controls.
Ste- Stephen?
Yep.
This, this is the project off of Route one off of exit fifty-seven?
That's correct.
Cross from Guilford Commons.
Right.
Yep. Yep, there's not a lot of the site that's visible from the road, but it's a pretty big site.
I, it's, it, it, what gets people's attention are the piles of sand and gravel.
Yeah, so they are, they are doing some pretty extensive site work in the rear of the property that was a. That I believe was approved per the original approval. And from my initial conversation with the engineer for the project. Is that a lot of that uh, material is being processed on the site, some is being brought off. But some is being retained for the septic system on the site.
So can I ask a quick question, Stephen? So are regulations and I'll, I'll refer to, you know, for the height of a building. Have to do with existing grade? How are we going to determine that if they're basically removing fairly ma? I mean, are they going from the original existing grade and you take out twenty feet, do you go? You know, to what your maximum height is? Plus the twenty, I mean, it, it just, it's confusing.
Yeah, and I, I, I think for context, Phil, you're bringing up a great point because, you know, for Stephen's benefit, he may not be familiar with. The very prolonged process we had in the, which led to the approval of the U-Haul. Uh, building area one, so there, there was an issue with the height of the building. Based on the, the previous removal of.
Well, it's actually the addition.
Yeah, yeah, I'm familiar with that, that issue.
From um, grindings from the uh, highway project, right?
Yeah, so again, I guess my question is how regulated is? The existing grade issue with respect to when you're removing as much material as they've been removing?
I don't know if it's relevant when you're moving material, removing material, more so when you're adding material. Because I think the concern is that, and the intention of the regulation is that. By thereafter adding material to a site. Um, after the grade is already established, that you're going to end up with a building that's in excess of. Right, that, than it would have been. Uh, when you're reducing the grade, you don't run into that issue.
It, it is.
Well, I mean, except, except for the standpoint of, you know, if you remove twenty feet. And you got a thirty-five foot height limit, could the total height of your building be fifty-five feet then?
No, it would still be measured from the average finish grade.
Okay.
All right, my, my question.
My question on this thing is, this has been going on for what, a couple of years? Those piles of.
Yeah.
But Kyle's keep growing and growing and growing. And uh, Cherry Hill is the people that are doing this work. I understand that you're trying to straighten out the land to get ready to build on it. But why does it take two years and piles and piles and piles like that? Stay in there all the time. Now that, as far as I know, is when you're building a house. The first thing you have to do is remove the soil that you're not going to be using for the house after it's done. You don't leave it there for two years and not only Cherry Hill, but other uh, vehicles have gone in there and hauled out soil. So this looks more like it's a, uh. A lot, a lot that they're uh, using to uh, st- stock uh, uh, material so that they can sell it. I don't think it needs to go on for two years like that if you're gonna, not gonna use it. Or if you're not, even if you're gonna use it, you can't let it sit there for year after year. I mean, this is one of the things that Guilford has made very uh, important. Uh, we have people that, there's another group that had, wanted to bring in soil and, and use it as a, a. A place to get rid of it and sell it. And we put them through a good situation here to make sure that they were. Meeting the requirements that we wanted. And they, they had to get it in the back, they had to get it out of the way. This is right on the main road. And it's been sitting there for two years. Now, it doesn't sound right to me that they should be able to have these piles of, of material. And selling it to people, it looks more like a gravel pit than anything. That's my particular view on this thing. I, I don't see why we're letting them get away with two years of the same thing over and over, piling more and more there. And you're trying to tell me they're going to use all those piles in the back to, around houses? Uh, and it looks a little suspicious.
Sure, I, I definitely recognize.
Go ahead.
No, go finish up, please.
I was just going to say, I think it would, needs to be looked into. And as that soil needs to, uh, uh, gravel and whatever it is, needs to be removed from a, from the road. Right, right across the side for the rock pile. I don't believe that's the kind of uh, eyesight that we want in Guilford. A gravel pit across the street from a, a major entry to, to uh, stores on the right-hand side.
Yeah, your, your concerns definitely resonate with me. And the reason I brought this up today is because. These issues have been raised in that I wanted to let you all know that we are looking into this actively. Um, and that we are sitting down for a meeting with all the involved parties from the site. Um, to get an idea of the timeline and also to do a thorough look through on the original approvals and see. You know, where we stand with zoning compliance.
Well, that's why I brought it up last month to uh, Jamie to look into. And uh, I see she did a good job.
Right. And Bill here, I have a, just a comment. I think that possibly when it was originally approved, it wasn't fully understood. How much material was actually.
That's Frank, Frank, you and I, you and I who sat through that one. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we've done sidewalks on that, that, that's a gigantic piece and.
And I think that uh, just to address Alan's comments, I, I don't think those piles have been static. I think it's just a continuous uh, swapping of materials in and out. Uh, so I think it's just the, the general.
And they did curtail outside contractors, I believe, going on site to remove it. So any materials that's getting moved off-site is being done by Cherry Hill.
Correct. But it is still quite impressive.
Have you got the equipment to crush stone? I guess you want to use it, right?
That stone pile right in the front has been there for at least, at least two years, at least.
It's been, but it's been moving. They've been taking material off and.
I watch it all the time and it's, it's moving little by little, but it's being sold. And this is not a gravel pit, okay? That's the way I feel.
Yeah, we will.
Kind of, kind of a tough situation.
Eye on it and monitor. Um, so next item quickly is just a discussion on moving um, meetings. To in-person, uh, do we want to continue with Zoom? Do we want to have a hybrid? How, how does everyone feel? Yeah, Bill.
I would love, I uh, personally feel that the Zoom format is far superior to in-person. From an understanding of the actual documents and the process that's being explained because people can actually show. On your screen or however you're looking at it, uh, very detailed analysis of this projects and what's being. And you know, Phil can do his Google Zoom or Earth magic and things like that. So I really uh. I know this is a little bit of a conversation on the state level as well because of a potential extension of that. And I, I just think you can incorporate so many more people into the process because you, you don't have to drive. It's uh, it's a, it's better uh, from that standpoint. And I, you know, I've been at so many hearings where, you know, there's a little easel in the front and you're kind of like, not really sure what you're looking at. Whereas I think in this case, it, you, with the Zoom, you just, you just completely get a.
Think about how, how nice it was to be able to look at the site plans today for Hubbard Road. And kind of pick and choose and it's, it's almost as if you've got the whole presentation in front of you personally.
Yeah, I mean, literally, it's like, uh, I'm almost doing it myself. I mean, you can ask a question. Can you, can you, like one, I forget, was it maybe like Eagle View where I wanted to see the retention system again and they just pulled it up again and there it was. So I think personally, I think this is better, but I, I, that's just my own opinion.
Yeah, I mean, uh, what, what, what do people think about um, a hybrid? Uh, you know, I mean, what people pick and choose and, because you know, I, I mean. We, we, to clear, my wife and I, my wife contracted, she, she got COVID last week.
I heard we're not set up for hybrid.
And also I think it's me, it's me that really wants to see it in detail. I understand that the public does as well, but. But for me to be able to see it in that level of detail is amazing. And I'll be, tell you the same thing.
Well.
What, what Sean just said is I also have two friends that are fully vaccinated, fully everything. Boosted and everything and they both now have COVID. So I, I don't think this, I, I don't think the tiger's in the tank yet.
Okay, but the, 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 the town has just added some new technology to, what, what's the room? We, we met.
At the Selectman's meeting room.
Yeah, I mean, they got a, a huge screen. It, it is, it is set up for hybrid. I mean, so that someone who is online, if Bill wants to stay online. Can, you know, see something up close and request, you know, different screenshots. And people in the room don't have to rely on a, an easel that's, you know, two by four. And they can't see it from the back row. They can see it in full color on a screen in this new, newly equipped room. That, that we, we, you know, we, we, we met in for years.
That the last land acquisition committee meeting was a hybrid Zoom meeting. Uh, it took place from the, the Selectman's office. I'm not sure you were there, Sean, or not. You might have missed last month.
I think I missed that meeting.
Yeah, so that, so that was a hybrid meeting. I mean, and it was great. The only problem is if a large member of the public decides they want to show up in person. That's a tiny, tiny room. And I think that might be the only room that's set up for hybrid. No?
Oh, it's there, there, there's a new one. Uh, Jamie, are you familiar with it?
Right, yeah, I just wanted you to, you know, continue your deliberation before I interrupted. But um, Lisa can actually help me out the most here. Um, but I believe that the room that we used to meet in, in the community center is now outfitted for a hybrid meeting.
It is. I, I've seen it. It is.
Yeah, you're correct. The Minooketuck Room is fully hybrid now.
And Lisa and I have been giving it a little bit of thought. Um, you know, I think um, Bill, as you alluded to. And our own John Gaskowski, who was helping us with uh, interim, uh, as interim planner. Wrote an op-ed piece uh, on how the state legislature has yet to decide what is going to happen. Uh, for, for public uh, meetings, uh, whether they're going to continue the Zoom or go back to in-person. And that expires at the end of this month. So um, you know, in discussions with Chuck Andrews, our land use attorney, and also Lisa and I kind of giving it some thought. We're kind of erring on the side of caution to uh, plan our May meetings. If you do agree uh, to be of hybrid in nature. That way, those who want to attend via Zoom can attend via Zoom. That way, those who want to attend via Zoom can attend via Zoom. Those who want to come in person can come in person. Uh, we're committed to, and Lisa spends a significant amount of time ensuring that all materials are on the website. So that will continue to happen. Uh, people will have access to that material digitally. I do want to be honest that I think maybe that first meeting might be a little bit of like. You know, troubleshooting out some kinks because we had discussed bringing the videographer in so that somehow we can. Like allow the people that are joining via Zoom to be able to see the people speaking. I mean, there's a lot of little technical things. Like somebody's got to work the computer and let everybody in and share a screen, but. We don't think it's uh insurmountable.
Yeah, but I, I think.
We need, I'm sorry, we, we need to have some, would we need some actual, we'd, we need to require a certain amount of. Uh, commission members to be live then? Would it be strange to have us be um? Of us be on Zoom.
Or you could be in.
But then you have, the room is literally just people that decided to drive from home and, and, but we're not there, like, that seems very strange.
There's, there's sort of two things to think about here. One is that um. Uh, in New Haven, months ago, their practice was that if a member of the public did not have the technology. To get on a Zoom meeting, we, the staff would be in a room with a computer where that person could come. And engage in the Zoom meeting. So I think about it as now the reverse of that, right? Like, um, we will have both options. Uh, I will be in the physical room, uh, you know, there to steer the meeting. Um, the question about commissioners, eh, Chuck kind of. You know, wasn't sure about this one because in the past, you know, it was always an option for a commissioner to join via telephone. I guess. Uh, now in this day and age, we talk about, you know, uh, we can see everything that's happening, so it's not quite the same. But the regulations do require that when we speak, we announce who we are so that if someone isn't, you know.
I also would add that I, I just think, um, you know, people, myself included, will probably. Be considering, you know, more travel. Um, I hope we can, I hope we all can. And this technology allows us to still have a quorum. With a hybrid model. So I, I think there are some benefits to, the, the, and the only thing I'd add is that. Um, whoever's going to be running the technology in that room. The, let's not wait till the day before to get. You know, I've been to plenty of corporate conferences.
Twenty minutes, twenty minutes.
Corporate conferences, if they're well-run, they're there three days before and they're rehearsing. For, you know, eight, ten hours a day before the initial event, so. We can, we can get this right.
All right, well, let, let's, we don't have to figure this out until May, correct, Jamie?
Well, first of all.
That's kind of correct. I just want to, sorry, Alan, just, um, I also want to let Steve speak just in case I said something earlier that. You don't agree with, but also just in terms of, in terms of scheduling, uh, you know, for, for Lisa and that, you know, kind of. Commitment of, you know, getting people on the schedule and and knowing where they're going. Uh, we're already thinking, you know, already thinking about this, uh, where it's going to be, so uh just keep that in mind.
Okay.
I just want to add a quick comment for, in regard to Scott and Jamie's comment there. And that is a bit of clarification that the, as the law currently stands right now. If a, if, when we go back to in-person meetings, if a commissioner requests that they be accommodated. By teleconference or Zoom or whatever it is, that the commission has to allow that request. So, I mean, theoretically, theoretically, if you all requested the, to join via Zoom, then that would have to be accommodated, so. I, I don't know if it's fair to consider that situation necessarily.
Okay.
Well, I don't see any problem with a. In-person, going back into the in-person or the hybrid or both. Um, the reason being that um. There's a lot of elderly people that don't have the knowledge or the equipment. To get onto this Zoom meeting we're having right now. And uh, being on the commission for the length of time I have. There's an awful lot of elderly people that were coming to the meeting before that I, I don't see any of their faces on here. A lot of these people are incorporated into the agenda on a particular subject and they are. Unable or not going to get on Zoom, so. Uh, I think for the, especially the elderly or the people that don't have the equipment. I think we need to do an in-person back again. We're not in a situation where. We're under a pandemic that, that, everybody's got to wear masks and everybody's got to stay six feet apart and all that stuff. We get to that, that's another situation, but right now, I think that we need to get back on to in-person meetings. We will all go to the meetings if we can go. If you can't, then you just stay home and get on a hybrid. And get on the phone and you'll still be on at the meeting, so we're not going to be any shorter on people on our commission. But we're certainly short on people that want to come to the meetings that are unable to. And I'm very persistent in the, and the, and the elderly and the people that are unable to be coming to these meetings that I know. Would be there. I'm not saying we're going to have a hundred, a hundred and fifty, but there, I remember there was days when there was no, no room. And a room to sit down. And a lot of those people are not coming to these meetings and I would like to see it back to the situation.
I hear what you're saying, but I would also push back and say, I actually think we've had more people at the Zoom meetings. Than we had in person, but.
No, I disagree with that.
Well, that, look at how many people showed up for the Eunice Demond. We had a hundred and fifty people at one point. So.
Well, then they can get on the, on the, on the Zoom. It's not a problem.
Jamie and I will make a decision and we'll go from there.
Hey, Phil.
Yeah.
Can I assume then that I should book people for May? Like book my videographer and book my room? I'll do that.
Yes, and if we have commissioners that want to attend, um, virtually, they can do that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, Phil, as long as that option is available, then I'm, I'm fine with either way.
Thanks. Uh, Jason, we're saying.
I just want to say in your defense, I see someone watching us who I used to work with and I had never seen her before at any of the live meetings. So that's, I think that's an example of people will zoom in because it's comfortable from home, so I like the hybrid model.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I definitely think we can um accommodate both. You know, I think there'll be a learning curve on it, but. You know, we've got talented people behind us.
I mean, it certainly increases access in general, right? And increases transparency. Like, I don't know how many people watched the videos that we were taking before. And this certainly is a lot easier for people to access too, so.
Yep, all right, terrific. Um, let's move on to our last agenda item approval. I was, someone like to make a, send, I have a chance to look at the minutes from our last meeting?
I did. They were substantially correct, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Richard. So I agree.
Very good. Uh, I'll make a. Motion, uh, so that was a motion to approve, Frank?
It was.
Thanks. I'll call the vote. Frank D'Andrea?
I.
Jason?
Yes.
Phil Freeman?
Yes.
Kevin Clark?
Abstain, I was up there.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Alan Brown?
Yes.
Uh, and Kevin, did I get yours?
Did, and I'll say yes again.
Sorry, and I will also abstain because I was not there as well, so the minutes passed.
Is there any, is there any significance between the two hats? I don't know, I'm just curious.
Ah, just a little Boston Red Sox. You gotta, you gotta get a little more uh representation, equal representation here.
Uh, funny.
I won't have to bring a hat to the next meeting. Um, with no further business before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Actually, Phil, you have to do the elections.
Oh, snap.
So, yeah, um, Jase, I was going to put that to our next meeting because I don't think Jason's been able to get to everybody.
Um, so I haven't asked Jason. Yeah, I'm missing one person.
Okay, so um, I, I don't believe we're required to do it tonight, Jamie, are we? Okay, so um, what I've asked Jason to do is reach out to each of you uh and, and. Get your feeling for what you would like to see as the uh commission members being chairman, vice chair and secretary uh for the next year.
Jason, my, I'm sorry, my phone number's wrong on the uh website, FYI, so.
I noticed, yeah.
Yeah, sure. Uh, but uh, Jamie knows how to get in touch with me, so.
Okay, good, so that's two. So what, what, what we'll do is at our next meeting, um, Jason, at some point will um propose a slate of officers. Uh, and we will vote on that.
Okay, can I add to that? Uh, Phil, do you want to move till uh next time also? I've been requested by uh Kevin Clark because he is on inland wetlands that he, we voted he become official liaison. Because I think he's only, well, he's not official at this point.
Sure, we, we can address that as well, Kevin, that's fine.
Okay.
Good. By a show of hands.
I vote for you, Phil.
Night, guys.
Good night.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.